... All the political board meetings are ordered. Please sign this on your cell phones. Item four, approval of the agenda. If there's additional corrections, turn down all the cameras and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote, motion carries. Announcement, the village board will adjourn into the closed session pursuant to the State of State Statute of nineteen eighty-five one G. Confirm the legal counsel for governmental body who has threatened or oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. Property tax repayment, less. Item four, public interference of the citizens' comments. No item on this on the agenda, no debate will occur. Items cannot be acted upon in this meeting but whom we refer to the proper staff to make any actions required. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Does anyone want to speak other than on the school issue? But you get a chance one day on that agenda item. Okay. Item five, approval of consent agenda. Thank you. We'll move to the second. All the cameras say aye.
Aye.
The vote, motion carries. Item six, introduction of library director. Mike Lee Lynn wants to do this.
Hi, I'm Linda Hammond and the president of the Clara's Library Board. And it's my pleasure to introduce our new library director, Amy Comble. She's been with us for a while as library clerk, but has decided to take on role of library director and very exciting for her career. If you have not been in the library to meet her, then see her today shortly.
Thank you. And it's a pleasure to be all of you and I do welcome you to stop in the library at any time. And there Monday at eleven seven are still pretty much nine to five. We've got a lot of technology projects underway right now around our sort of community. It's well to list of programs, programs and opportunities for children and adults coming here. So lots to discuss and the more people that I hear from and talk to, the better. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item seven, hold minutes. Considerations discussion of public facility needs assessment.
Right.
Good evening. Are you standing in the picture spot or just rambling out?
Just for the rest of the folks that are here tonight, I've just got some of what are remaining from last month. We did a lot of utility in town. We do a number of items with growth, fire needs, village utilities looking at a second water reservoir to mimic the one up on, if you have a hill on the upside of the valley. So we're talking a little bit about what's that for and how big it should be. So for the board, I had made up a handout relative to our discussion last month, or pros and cons of two different tank sizes that we had looked at. And folks had a chance to look at that and look at us. For those that have not had a minute to run through that, I'll quickly summarize there. So for the 300,000 gallon tank, that estimated budget cost right now would be 2.3 million. We're also going to talk about the impact fees there. Using a method to assign impact fee based on your average daily demand and how that pro rates out to the whole tank size, we feel you could defensively pick anything between 25 to 55% of impact fee. The advantage for this 300,000 gallon tank, which is a twin of what you have right now, sort of bellator system size, obviously lower upfront costs, smaller is the order of the cost to build, less O and M cost in the future for painting, repairs, cleaning, those sorts of things because of the size. It also allows for more frequent water turnover, which in the early stages of the tank's life is valuable because you're sizing this for 40 years and in the summer, if you're not turning your water over, the guys can have some challenges managing the chlorine there so the water doesn't get stale and the winter managing ice, making sure that water turns over often enough that it doesn't turn into icebergs. This does provide you a significant boost in average daily supply as well as increasing your fire flow. It does provide about 2,300 gallons a minute for three hours, which is quite a bit of an increase from what you currently have. The larger tank is similar but bigger. The impact that it costs of both the front and ongoing O and M, because it's much larger, a portion of this tank cost that's attributed to future people goes down. We talked a little bit last month that increase in the size goes well beyond our projections of growth for 40 years and really primarily addressed just fire flow needs a concurrent system so that the capabilities of attaching costs to future users as they move into town, that goes down. You do get some account of new scale, like Costco, the bigger ones, I got a little chamber per gallon. It does introduce some more fire flow, about 900 gallons a minute, more fire flow, but it does have those cost concerns as well as some decent operations concerns about keeping that stale water managed and keeping the water freezing during the winter. So before I go on to the impact fee, as we were talking last month, we're really looking to get two things settled. One would be size of the reservoir. And once that's set, then it would be establishing that impact fee ratio, how much of the cost would your auditors assign to future users compared to current users. So without using the first question, I'll make a pause here and see if there's any questions on just tank size that anybody want to talk about?
Yeah. So considering cost, but realistically, is there any really good reason to go with a large tank? Based on projected flow?
Not from our recommendation. Now, you do have increased fire flows, no question about it, but the value of that to a community is not a one-to-one on dollars standpoint. And a smaller tank is more than adequate for our 40-year projections, which are quite conservatively aggressive, that's the thing. We're planning on a lot of growth in 40 years to make sure you don't need another tank. But the incremental size would just be for fire protection and not that much more relative to the fire protection you're going to get from a second tank.
Have we already decided an interior for the tank? So that remember there was a large difference there.
For sure. These costs would be the highest ones that we receive from the tank suppliers. Once the size is established, we'd be working with staff to come back to this group to evaluate pros and cons of material, those being steel, concrete, or a deposit. And those are in a flux way with the market. So what is today the lowest cost option may or may not be when we finally get to designing the next few months.
May I ask, make a motion that we go ahead and...
Did you have more of a presentation?
Just a motion on the tank size and then the impact fees. I think that would be preferable from my standpoint. If we decided on the tank, I think we talked about impact fees as a separate discussion.
But you interrupted yourself, so before you go any further.
Yes, that is separate discussion of the impact fees. So first a decision on tank size, that'll inform your next decision. That's clear. There's confusion there.
That's kind of a very proud. I would like to be looking at the 300,000 dollar or 300,000 gallon tank. I wish it was 300,000.
I'm going to tell us something. Item number one, second is there any discussion from the board? Turn down all the cameras and say aye. Aye. The vote, motion carries.
Very well. Second and final item would be talking a bit about the impact fee. So communities, many, many, many communities, when they're building a new piece of heavy cost infrastructure, often pay for some of it via impact fee, which is a cost that is assigned to new users because you are sizing this for future growth and assigning the remainder of the cost to your current users. So that there will be a need to raise water rates to pay for the utilities portion of the tank. The question would simply be where on that scale of zero to 100%, do the villagers want to assign that value to the current users compared to the value to the future users? The over-under on that really relates to how good everyone's first of balls. A higher impact fee of going to 100%, say or 95%, would really minimize rate increases for current people, but it requires a lot of people to move into town at a very fast pace in order to pay your loan. Alternatively, the inverse, you know, 5% impact fee would have a higher impact, a higher increase to your current rates, but put more cost on them and less reliance on future people to move in. So there's a sweet spot. It is important to remember that if a community counts on, I'll say, a large portion of new users to pay for this and those don't appear, they don't exist 10 years out, you are not allowed to raise your water rates to make up that difference, actually get that from your general fund, which can sometimes be tricky. So we would generally suggest to a community that you come up with a range that you feel comfortable with. We have done a number of these and have often used what we call the average day demand method to assign what is the value for current users. For the 300,000 gallon tank, that works out approximately a 35% impact feeable, which would put 65% on the current users, 35% on future users, would pay an impact fee when they hook their new home or new apartment into the system. And then would also be paying the water rates on top of that. So for that size tank, we would suggest 35%. We think you could defend 25 to 55 based on a number of other evaluation methods, but anything outside of that, we'd get a little nervous, say you're too far one way or the other. When he says defend, he's referencing that the PSC will review the impact fee to determine if you're being equitable in the distribution of that, of the benefit of the water tank. So we have to choose one which is defensible to the PSC, which will approve whatever impact fee we attempt to implement. So not much else to add to that. Do you have any questions from the group?
We have a very old impact fee in place that is not adequate to assist in building a new water tower based on years old data that estimated water tower cost is $60,000 per hour.
Yes, I should mention somebody just here, the 2003 efforts that somebody may recall was talking about in the last few months, that did also result in an impact fee. As Craig pointed out, that fee was based on 40-year projections back in 2003, it's also based on construction costs in 2003. So part of this effort is indeed to replace and update your existing water impact fee.
Is there anything on water? We have a lot of things coming.
We have part of impact fees. Part of impact fees. And so fees are related to water development off the top line, but I can't remember any that's packed on to a new one of those purposes.
Because of the efficiency.
Correct. So there is a, there could be, if you set an impact fee too high, there is a possibility of dampening effect on development. So it is certainly a consideration.
Is there a difference there?
That would be the preferable outcome. So as he said, 25% to 55% is probably defensible. And as he noted though, if you assign too high of an impact fee, really if you assign any impact fee and development doesn't occur, that's the risk that's associated with it because then likely the general fund, you later have to take it out of whatever rate of return, excess rate of return the water utility is generating, or the village's general fund, AKA property taxes, will have to subsidize that piece if the development doesn't possibly occur. So like I said, you have to strike the balance of both not wanting to overburden current rate payers with overly, with a rate increase that is, doesn't apply to the benefit, but also the acknowledgement that if you are too aggressively impact fee and development does not occur, the financial strength of the utility will be dampened.
Well, I have another question. So we set this tonight and then we turn back.
Well, essentially what we're doing, we're instructing the Hill complete public needs assessment. That number gets sent to elders who were approved to develop impact fee and they will develop the impact fee and then you will have to approve it in order to set the impact fee.
Well, this should just be a 0 to 100% split between existing and future.
We're assigning, we're assigning what?
We're being asked to look into.
We're saying the same, what benefit is 75% of benefit of the new water tower existing users, is it 65%?
Okay, I agree with you. Well, what kind of impact?
Well, we can't calculate the impact fee without signing the amount as well.
So we have to decide tonight whether we're not leaving this current tower, if one will is benefiting people more in the future or people...
I disagree.
I understand you're saying it's a very, very complicated thing and it's still looking at...
It's not complicated. I'm not going to come out and face it. Impact fee, I don't know about.
So if we set this, if we set this impact fee tonight, as you said, Tammy, I've never set an impact fee, so I know I'm not familiar with parameters. Is there, your recommendation could come back to us and say, this is an impact fee that's just not going to work for the community as well as the village? Does it change? Is it the only one that can change that impact fee that is not us? You cannot change that if you make a decision that this long choice based on limited information?
In fact, really the only people that can change it.
Oh.
So the process is fairly choreographed to change one or set one. So right now, we've run numbers that indicate the size of your tank at 300,000 gallons. We compare that new additional size of 300 additional thousand gallons to what you, we'd likely to have using modern standards for storage now, and we've determined that roughly 35% of that is mostly just for future users. So that's where that 35% recommendation comes from, is using that evaluation method, that's where we're seeing. To some of the questions about cost, we do have an estimated cost for the 300,000 gallon tank of 2.3 million dollars. So if that's, and we feel comfortable with that number, by using that propagated out, that would result in an impact fee of 2,500 dollars for a new connection to your system, 2,500.
And that's assuming how many new homes are going to come on board? And that's what I'm trying to figure out. Okay, so like let's say we have some development of 10 houses that don't really count that are going to go to next year. So is that how many we need to get for 35% or do we need 20 or do we need 50?
That's a very loaded question because it'll depend how quickly they arrive. If they arrive soon, then they not only pay impact fee one time, but then they start becoming customers and they begin paying their water rates. And the village utility, you can both be impact fee pile of money and the excess revenue from your water rates to pay that loan on. So the sooner they come, the more it compounds on itself. So it's hard to really answer that definitively. In reference, your current impact fee, which was set in 2003, 2004, for a single family in almost 860 dollars. So if you're looking at some reference there for 20 years past, it'd be roughly a three times increase at that value. Impacting a new house or a new apartment, a new single family, the impact current users, which is also one of the quarters by our, is also frustratingly vague. Those rates are set by PSC, so we're not, we're not really sure what PSC is going to come down with and how that's going to impact current users on a dollars basis. So dollars are going to get changed and set based on this percentage. But to get firm answers on any of those, we're going to disturb the percentage. So you started off asking who can change it and how. It's through this process. We would do, if it's found to be too high or too low, a community could redo this process. We'd go above facilities needs assessment again. You'd want to do it sooner than later because the tower, the tank is anticipated to be built in 2024. So once it's in, the cost of the construction bids cost, you're not allowed to re-figure it once you've already spent the money.
Here's a dilemma that I faced with this in deciding a new impact fee. In some ways, we blares as you mean. We have a core of people in the community in minimal growth. So anything that's ever done in this community, infrastructure, whatever, it's burdening the same group of taxpayers. So anything that's improved upon, it's the same people that get slammed. And so we, you know, we don't have that at this point, we don't have that growth. So in that scenario, can you just shoot out a number of what would be the best balance? If you have, if you're at this point, we depend upon the same people to pay the same the increase in bills, is it 55, 20? I don't know.
Sure. We would recommend somewhere in that 35% range, 35% for new folks, 65 for existing. That is looking at a 40-year population projection of 4,000 people. If there's some concern that that's too much too fast for where the community wants to go, then we would recommend sliding back to 25% of new people are benefited by this tank compared to 75% of existing folks. And conversely, the other way. It is certainly a, I'm at a high slice, a future prediction, a decision that will be propagated for many years without being asked for, to figure out how updated or how quickly the villagers may want to be.
So this question may be completely out of bounds. What's frustrating for me is that we're building this tower primarily because we're kind of to breaking point of being, to do it with fire protection being like the thing that kind of put us over the top. I mean, we're moving towards being over the top with more houses and stuff, but in ultimately fire protection goes beyond the village of new blares. And yet it's the utility payers and the village of new blares that are comparing the burden of this payment. And I do not for the life of me understand how it is utility payers in the village of new blares that continue to hold onto this burden when this tower is not going to just give benefit to us, but to the entire surrounding area. If they were to have a fire, they're going to depend on us and that's nice of us, but the thing is, is that it's so frustrating and you just keep coming to us, this tiny little village and, and we're expected to continue to take these hits in our taxes and our now, and I don't deny that this fire for this water tower is not going to be a good thing and that it's going to provide, and save water, this secure water. It's just driving me crazy that you're asking the two city or two night and say, these neighbors, I love you guys, we got to give another few gentruries here and we're very generous in doing this because I feel like they're sharing this gift with a lot of other people who aren't being burdened with these choices. And that's just me talking and I'm not, you know, but it is frustrating to me because this is a fairly large burden.
How did you guys anticipate that 4,000 people grow in 40 years?
That was something we talked about at board back in the wintertime. We took a combination of the DOA projections, your historical census data, and your comprehensive plan, the areas that were planned out for growth, and plotted all three of those lines out 40 years and here, amalgamation of those three methods. That is also, as it were, that's consistent with the village's efforts back in 2002. And we're also shooting for that about 4,000 person target, but it is a, it is a projection. I'm just thinking about that.
Have you ever creatively, this is probably kind of out there, but have you ever creatively prognosticated what townships we use for fire coverage and given, and we've had an impact fee based on the townships we use our fire facility and water?
We have not. And I'm actually not familiar with your agreements with local fire districts and how those, I imagine there's some dollars of exchange hands or could?
We provide, we provide all the water for fire protection and fire district. And we do not have the, at this time, do not charge our department for the water. And...
Yeah.
External areas, I'm sure.
Can I go, I haven't heard that.
35% would be your recommendation if you think that's equal to like 44,000? So 35% would be your recommendation if you think that's going to grow like 24,000 people in 40 years? And we think it's gonna grow by the last minute, we slide lower.
Correct, slide towards that 25, within.
And the 35% is a estimated $2,500 impact fee on a single-family home.
So what was our difference between 2003 and 2022? 4,000 years to 4,000?
No, not even close. You're in a bit of a chicken and egg scenario where.
Well, we never had any growth because we would have water systems to expand.
That, I mean, that's, that's, oh, I mean.
Right. So we've been doing this, this is the same thing we've been doing over, over, over 20 years. And now we're just still talking about the same thing. It's a decision, do we want to build a water tower so that we can expand? Or do we want to sit here and talk about our 20 years and still get 23,000 people? Please.
Well, no, it's not that.
It's not that. I'm sorry, Chuck's talking here for a second.
Do you believe we haven't had any growth?
We've had small, little, little ones when it's been consistently built all the years. I know, you know, there's been discussion about over ban lockdown, not ban lockdown. We do have areas that we can grow, we just need to develop those areas so that we can.
Are you saying you take the developers who are not in the rest of the, yeah, building your company? Do we go back to water supply?
As part of the, yes, as part of it, yes. I do believe that some developers would love to develop, they have water supply.
I haven't heard that. Ever that we have to, you've been asked that. Still, I mean, I guess you, we think that 4,000.
Water supply wasn't good.
I'm not, my water supply was a sticking point with the developer about validation. The lack of, the lack of that, the water supply wasn't monitored since they signed it, it's not a good part of the development.
So I think, which well, very likely, I think that's the only development they showed.
Phase one, phase one was considered to have a water supply is lower, the elevation is lower, they're not building up on the hill. So they had a lower water pressure and water supply issues.
So, you know, we have a pretty good feel for what PSC will approve. And others has an excellent feel on what they will approve. So as long as you're doing your diligence and not getting way out of whack from what the pure technical analysis is showing, we have not seen PSC deny that. So if you're in within those bookends, you can feel pretty good that others, as people closer to us, to PSC, they'll be able to confirm that.
All the deputy, I think, make motion to approve the impact here at 35% to 65% split. Can you hear me?
Motion to second and order discussion. You're now the most famous guy. Hi. Both. Motion carries.
If you have a complaint, I'll kind of remind you.
Okay, Luna, Luna's consideration discussion. Discussion approval of the end of test case to special enhancement in 9/11/22.
The draft plan is included in the packet. They have scheduled the event schedule for September 11th, 2022. Public Works and Public Safety Committee recommend it.
Motion to second and report discussion.
Yeah, I have one question. I'm great, George. It's not a big thing that I don't have any, something I didn't understand. I just saw a closure of Port Haven, not a closure, but locking up of Port Haven and the handicap park. And I'm just curious. Oh, that's another one.
Joe, do you have any thoughts on that closure loss for the handicap park in Port Haven?
I think as far as I know, they were just closed and just considering all the handicapped people that attended. There's a lot of elderly people that come a lot of times. Some years they had UTVs, we give them permission that are bringing to it. A lot of handicapped people are what they're charged to. They would be, parking so much that, and, and, yeah, George got a bunch of them for the month.
Remember last year, Jeff talked a little bit about that, about growing his location? Has there been any improvement on that?
No, last year was still pretty well attended, but there was a moment, I mean, we have a whole park in the streets.
Okay. What other things? I think that's expected, I think so. All the members, yeah? Hi. Both. Motion carries. Item B, consideration discussion, shall lay in the Golden Police Pest Control. Thanks.
Volunteers are reporting to others that the Shalayah Golden Police has approved. At minimum, a small infestation of the bats in historic areas. The health and safety of the volunteers as well as the building, these bats can be removed. Companies providing the service do charge a quote fee, around like $99 to $250, which is ultimately applied to the work you take performing service. Our best estimate of the total cost is going to be between $2,000 and $8,000. This is an unbudgeted expense and there will be, there will be two options to fund it. So I'm hoping for the board to approve me to engage with the, to find a contractor and engage with one for the removal. And my first option will be to check with the auditor to see if it allows to roll it into the older construction loan we have on the Shalayah right now that we use to fund the repair of the balcony and other pieces of the exterior of the building. If the auditor says it does not accept the use of the loan, then we would need to use the building's safety fund to fund the removal and prevention efforts. I can't go back to this group with a list of quotes, however, we like to spend, if I only got five quotes, we could spend up to $1,000. And that, just getting the quotes and then that money would be gone with all the ones we did not select. So I'm asking for an open-ended authorization for me to engage with the contractor, to come out, get their quote fee, which then will be applied to the work, and then to, to fund it with one of the two options presented. The first option being the construction loan and if that is not acceptable, the second option, the, the building's safety fund.
I will vote back for you to make the best recommendation to us for a pest control in the town.
So it's an authorization to contract with a, whatever we, whatever we can do to exterminate it and then fund it.
We should ask the volunteers how the bats may be removed.
Thank you. Pest control of bats, they'll be, so we didn't say, will be mainly, mainly removed. And then I will fund it with one of the two options. So.
Any other questions? That would be discussion. You're now the most famous guy. Hi. Both. Motion carries. Item B, consideration discussion, where the school district traffic exception request. For those of you that are here to speak on the school district request, you will be allowed to speak during the district presentation, following the district presentation. I will read through the list of names if you have not signed in to do so. This will not be a question or answer, but opportunity to voice your opinion. And following that, following the public comment, the board will discuss the request. So, let's hear it from the district. When they're all done making the presentation, then, then you, I'll call on you to see.
Sorry, Roger, getting older, the hearing's not there.
Did you hear what I said that time then?
No.
When they're done doing their presentation, I'll call on you to see.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Per, I'm a project manager in Milwaukee. We are the executive director for the school district for the projects that were approved during the referendum plan. Specifically tonight, we're here to talk about the site development of the new primary school and the last decided on. During the referendum process, we had numerous feedback sessions with the community to develop an overall program for the school, what was needed in terms of classrooms and workspaces, and also for the overall site development of the school. During that time, we looked at site access from several different points. And the community, during that referendum planning process, selected the two connection points that we are currently using, 10th Avenue and the intersection of 8th and 11th. Because this is technically a high point and not a public road, although it is as wide as a public road, it requires variance because it's coming into the intersection of the three-way building street. For all intents and purposes, this will function as a roadway. It will not be functioning as a driveway, residential driveway or anything like that. Makes total sense that you live on a residential driveway coming into a, you know, an existing village intersection, and in this space, what we're really talking about is more a private roadway. We spent about the last 12 months working with the village and its engineers to come up with an accessible site plan, answering all their questions, analyzing more vision drive, making sure the intersection is safe, making sure that oncoming traffic and exiting traffic can safely see far enough down the road to avoid any sorts of accidents. We've also conducted a traffic analysis study at the district's expense to analyze the traffic loads that would be brought to the neighborhood by this new school. And that was, that was called the level of service report, indicates that these intersections will still operate with an A rating, which is the highest rating that the intersection can have in terms of its capacity to handle traffic and the safety of the intersection. So we're asking for this variance for to connect at 8th and 11th Street, and I don't have to answer any questions again.
So at this point, Rogers are reading the names to go through the public comment. After you get through the public comment, the discussion will come back to the, to the board.
Do you guys want to keep that? Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Paul.
Thank you. For the record, I shouldn't have been on your floor. My comments generally aren't specific to item D. That is concern that I'm asking the village board in a special meeting with a special mailing to the residences in three subdivisions that would have a negative impact on the school proposal. And I think that's needed before you move forward. I would suggest you table any other items that has to do with access or discussion. I tell you, here to promote those residents in those three subdivisions. Thank you.
Alex Gray.
I'm speaking at Rockford State.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. Jesse, yeah, last item, back. Okay. I'm just sitting like here in the project here, I'll answer questions, no other comments. Okay. Kevin Bill Saunders.
I reserve my back to later. Who is it?
Okay. Grab the light one?
No. I don't know if I get it, Joe. I guess my concern with the, with that access point is, well, it's overall. I'm concerned with there not being any sidewalks leading up to that or even beyond yet. I mean, it seems unsafe. I know a lot of the conversation was with, I mean, initially it was keeping the plus traffic, the parent traffic and kids walking, you know, with the parents or whatever. And I feel like it's, you know, it's at the edge of town for the residents, but there's still a lot of offices in that area where I feel like there would be a decent amount of traffic with the parents. Like I said, I've sat down at the other school, we went to that, maybe in that area sometimes, and I come to look at the parents trying to die, and it seems like one of the sixes on the phone, almost across one from there, but, but, anyway, to me, just to set up this building and this roadway without having, you know, safety things that I think should just be automatic where these kids have, you know, blame to go away with, it makes some sense. And the disturbance in the neighborhood is another issue too. But I guess my, my sentiment is just for the safety of the kids, not having public access to those.
That is all right. Okay, well, down.
Just, just not to interrupt, sorry to interrupt, but if we could have you using the microphone, just so that we can hear what's happening here. My concerns are very similar. Sidewalk, I feel like is a very huge issue. It has been said that because of the age of the kids being more in grade or second grade, likely the way of them walking isn't likely, but we can't attest that. There are plenty of parents in town who are unfortunate, drive to this school and the bus, he doesn't always happen, so there will be that through on that road. And I think if the commission meeting had said that there was plenty of plans for them to walk on, I don't think that's necessarily safe either because there is snow or mud. They're going to put a wall on the road with the buses and the parents and the staff, which is a large number of people. The other part is it does directly affect me and my property, since our property lines are somewhat in dispute a little bit. So there is that, and there hasn't been like clear definition on whether the road will actually go in direction to my property and things like that. So there are concerns on that. I don't know. Are you sure you know more?
Yeah. You don't have that or?
I'm not, but, I mean, yeah, I'll wait for that.
Okay. Several bills?
I can reserve my comments for later.
Just want to clarify for the, for the group, this is the time of the public comment, so there is no guarantee that the board will reopen it for a public comment, so if you have a comment to make, I would recommend you do so now.
Did you want to speak then, Sally?
I will, I will. Thanks, great. I'm Sally Ellis, I've been village resident for 26 years.
Sally, could you hold my mic for me?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I could just put on my teacher voice. For those of you who don't know me, I've taught the district for 32 years, lived here for 26, and I think this is maybe the second village board meeting I've ever attended. So I kind of just only found that there's something really big and important, and I think that building, a new, a new school building is necessary for talking about the need for new infrastructure in our, in our village, and, and it is a definite need. You know, there's a reason we need another water tower. It's because people are, are moving here. And the people that are moving here are, are families with young children. And so we need to make sure that we provide for them the educational facilities that they, they need and they want and, and the reason that they're coming here. So I have faith that our district has done their due diligence and looked at all of the options and figured out what would work best among the architects, and hoping that the village board does their due diligence and provides the opportunity for the children in their reserve.
Anthony Edge?
I'm Anthony Edge, I'm about 11th Avenue. I would echo a lot of what Sally said. I don't envy those of you on the village board that was there, and I got off of it for a reason. And one frustration and thing that a lot of us had when we sat together was we always wanted to make more progress than sometimes we could when we were on the village board with a number of projects. And I think this is an opportunity that approving this variance for the village board to continue to be a good partner with the school district on helping the village continue to make progress. I think that there's been great cooperation between the village and the school district and experts on this project, gentlemen sitting around the room, my gentlemen ladies, who have worked on engineering this entrance and entrances of the site plan, and hope we can all trust those experts that they've developed a really good, acceptable, appropriate plan. You'll hear about things that could be done or can be done, but a lot of those things maybe shouldn't be done, and this is the plan that should.
What was mine?
Yeah, I really, I mean, the thinking is set up hard, but, and basically, I'd like to just, if the board has questions.
The board!
Carry on. If the board has questions during discussion, I would rather focus on that. Admin has just did a great job explaining. There's change, we know, we understand, and again, it's competitive, so if somebody has something new, we really have to care.
Shelly Johnson?
Well, I don't know that I'm going to say too much new that I haven't already been said, but I'm going to go back and echo really the safety concerns. So, you know, the comments that have been made by the last few speakers have really been about the school itself. That's not what we're here talking about. The referendum passed, that's not the issue on the table tonight. The issue on the table is where that road is going to go. And the fact that if you travel 8th Street or if you travel 10th Avenue, 12th Avenue or 14th Avenue, which are going to be the access points for that road if, if it goes in there, there are not sidewalks on any of those roads. I personally would not let my child or a grandchild or any family member that I know walk on Second Street today during the time that kids are being dropped off or picked up. It's a serious safety issue. Are you going to put a police officer there as well as at the existing grade school to ensure that these children are kept safe? So my primary concern is safety. Secondary concern is infrastructure. The roads in that area are not in good condition, they're in need of repair. The village doesn't have the money or funds to put the sidewalks in in order to repair the streets as they exist today. You're talking about the village residents burying the cost from a tax-based perspective of not only the new water tower, which is not only tied to development, but it's tied to this new school, but now also burying the cost for the infrastructure for the roads and sidewalks that will need to go in as a result of it.
Okay. Go on, empty here.
Like I kind of agree with Shelly, she got hit the spot. I've lived up there for darn near 40 years. It's a quiet neighborhood, library there, semi, or close to 300 people. It's a quiet neighborhood, I can just not sleep, not even. Now you're talking about building a school and then bringing out an intersection there with 30 to 33 staff, according to a playbook of schools, and 150 to 300 students, you have about 6, 8, 10 less. Well, I estimate there's a quarter of those students being shut over there. People like, as I said, you remember, if I were looking at like 50%, I was like, is it going to be all the school? Plus, a lot of tots are walking. These are first second graders. If you just walk there here to do something, I have more people walking by the house, walking dogs, families walking, than we have traffic walking by there. Now you're sticking buses and cars and extra traffic on there on a road that doesn't have some noise. I mean, you're looking for potential, it's probably some paint damage or harm to it. And these are village board members, I don't know if I could vote for allowing for intersection. They, they stated it was a safe intersection. I do not believe it would be safe intersection. But the extra traffic in our neighborhood, and this is meant, there's other options. We're not landlocked. They've got five other options or four other options to access different points. I'm not saying what they should do, but I'm just saying that this isn't really what smart people do. I don't even ask the police chief, their, uh, police department, and they do as they can to be safe out there, having old people walking out there, the variety of people walking, and then you've got kids all walking out there, you've got, you've got cars and buses. I don't know, I don't know if I could live with myself, hoping yes, with something happens in future. Very much I say, but it's a quiet neighborhood, we like to keep. Thank you.
Do you have a question? Do you want to speak? That was important discussion.
I have a question.
Do you have any other questions? How many of you prefer to stay in this place?
I'm so bad, I'm so sorry, but I did not hear the first person who talked about city, what about three subdivisions, and then you're going to add.
Ben, your neighborhoods would be Tower Heights, Windlock?
Tower Heights, Windlock, and the other subdivision, I forget the name.
I don't know if it's a subdivision, but it's essentially the group of people who are here tonight, whether we, whether all of them chose to speak or not. It's essentially that larger block essentially from Candy Cane up.
So you're asking us to sit and hear that letter and get them a chance to, that, that...
Oh, that means, that means, use a microphone.
I just want to clarify. I just want a clarification for what you said, I'm sorry, thank you.
She called her wife, she didn't say it. Oh, she didn't hear it at first.
I need a clarification for what you said, so.
No, I guess I, that's, that's.
I'm Pat Ryan, so, and we reviewed the site plan that the district submitted. So, so basically what we have done, the district submitted the private road that they have with their school connecting to 10th Ave., and they chose the location of 8th and 11th or the other entrance exit. During our initial discussions, it was brought up that there were other options added to that, and one was legal, like Lutherton Valley Road, Heights Drive, but they chose to pursue the 8th and 11th. So based on that, the site plan was reviewed. With that, as you know, the board needs to add an exception for the driveway at an intersection.
about three subdivisions, and then you're going to add one.
That call asks that the board gives a little special village board meeting and send a direct mail to the three neighborhoods that are next to the new site that will be impacted by the access points. Ben, your neighborhoods would be Tower Heights, Windlock?
Tower Heights, Windlock, and the other subdivision, I forget the name.
I don't know if it's a subdivision, but it's essentially the group of people who are here tonight, whether we, whether all of them chose to speak or not. It's essentially that larger block essentially from Candy Cane up.
So, asking us if you said, and who had letter to give them a chance to?
Oh, that means you're there. Use your microphone.
I just wanted clarification. I just wanted clarification for what you said, I'm sorry, thank you.
She called her wife, she didn't say anything.
I need clarification for what you said.
No, I guess I...
I'm Pat Ryan. Okay, I'm Pat Ryan, so it is. And we reviewed the site plan that the district submitted. So, basically, what we have done, the district submitted the private road that they have with their school connecting to 10th Avenue, and they chose the location of 11th or the other entrance access. During our initial discussions, it was brought up that there were other options added to that, and one was legal, like Littler Valley Road, Heights Drive, but they chose to pursue the 8th and 11th. So, based on that, the site plan was reviewed. With that, as you know, the board needs to act on an exception for the driveway at an intersection because that's what they chose to move forward with. So, based on that, we reviewed that connection as if it were a public issue, based on DOT guidance. And with that, and the information that the district provided, the site distance based on 25 mile an hour per street was acceptable. The vision triangle, based on DOT, does not need to be an old vision triangle, it's 44% based on the configuration they provided because with the configuration they have, gaining law will be needed on the other side of the road, driveway going out to the intersection. So, based on that, they meet the requirements stipulated by the DOT, and we don't see an issue with that. Now, going back to some of our initial conversations and meetings, you know, it was discussed going down like Littler Valley Road, and just recently, well, they had previously submitted a diagram of a driveway down Littler, but it went straight down at a steep. And we discussed that there could be some creative measures done to get access to that location. So, they came back just recently and provided that. You know, it's a longer driveway than the one to 8th and 11th. So, I'm sure that's an issue. And the other item is Littler currently is in a position to handle bus traffic for an entrance like that. So, a section of Littler would need to be upgraded at least from the village limits to just west past the entrance of that were to ever develop. That Littler currently is in the town, it's not in the village, where they would make the connection. So, that's pretty much where we are.
Tonight was being asked to be evaluated is the exception request for the driveway at the intersection of 11th and 11th. Pat, you can see your answer. Questions you may have, it meets the requirements, they evaluate a public intersection, public road intersection there. So, that's how it was evaluated, was a public road. So, you mentioned a few things about how it's evaluated, and then also mentioned the alternative locations that have been discussed in the past year, as well as the recent, the recent alternate agenda that the district has chosen not to pursue. So, the district has submitted the site plan and the exception request based on the access point at 10th and 11th. So, the exception request would be considered tempting. If the, depending on the board's action on the exception request, that informs the planning commission on the overall site plan approval. So, because it's a deviation from the ordinance, it requires an exception, the planning commission cannot approve a site plan, it does not comply with village ordinances. So, the village board needs to essentially tell the planning commission, yes, this is an acceptable deviation, we have ranked it the exception, or no, this is an unacceptable deviation, we have not ranked it the exception, and then the planning commission reviews the site plan in that context. But tonight, the village board is discussing and considering the exception request.
Where are the final?
Final statement, exception request is with the board, the final approval of the site plan is the planning commission. There will be other rules, and we still have to come to terms, we have to, we'll have to develop a development agreement, which is the board, the board and the school district have to approve the development agreement. So, there are other steps in the process still, but as far as site plan approval, the site plan will be approved, essentially the planning commission will approve the site plan regardless contingent upon any outstanding items that the engineers outline that they believe are attainable, and then as well as contingent upon the successful execution of a development agreement between the village and the school district.
So, but if the board approves the exception request, or the exception, the planning commission will be able to accept that. So, turn down the site plan approval based on...
They would need, they would, it's an interesting question. I would imagine if the village board indicated that they were ranking an exception for an access point at 8th Street and 11th, I would imagine the planning commission would not deny the site plan because of that exception. There would have to be another reason that the planning commission found the site plan to be unacceptable for the planning commission.
So, the planning commission desire for an alternative access point?
Bill, are you ready for your next question?
If the board were to approve the variance, then the plan would be in conformity, and therefore, I believe that absent other issues, the planning commission would have to approve.
Well, our attorneys essentially stated, so the planning commission, you can think of the planning commission's job as ensuring that the site plan applies with the village's ordinances, and that the adequate infrastructure exists to support the development. So, if the village board is saying, we approve this exception request, then from the planning commission's standpoint, that driveway now informs what the village's standards. And so, that would not be a reason, they would not have to, they should not deny the site plan based on that portion of the, as Bill said, absent other issues with the site
So, can I ask you a question? For long-term growth and for other reasons, why wouldn't we work with the town, the village, and the school district to improve Littler Valley Road? Why wouldn't we do that?
Are you asking, are you asking that person?
I'm asking, but I wanted to ask. With the money, is it just money, and is it just because it takes too long? But is it a better choice? I mean, I just need to know. It would mean anything.
Andrew, would you be able to provide a summary of reasoning as to why the school district prefers to construct the private driveway over an access point back over Valley?
Yeah, thank you. So, in our, in our discussions and our development of the site plan in the last year, we've looked at this rather large site, right? So, we've looked at it in terms of development, and in conversations with Mr. Rank, we have tried to develop this site for the best and highest use for the future. What that means is we have granted three right-of-ways through the site, which would allow for the village to expand streets through that person for future development, or whatever a developer might want to do, probably residential, right? And so, the layout of the site and the connection at 8th and 11th allow us for this private drive to be upgraded to Village Street at a later date, should a developer come along and decide that they want to utilize that land for development. As part of that, we've also agreed to put in water mains that conform to the city's standards. This is a, you know, this is currently private property, and so we would not have to do a water main to a public service level standard. As part of this negotiation, we've agreed to take the water main at least as far as from the school, to conform the village water main standards, making it further likely that development could occur in this site. With regards to Littler Valley Road, Mr. Rank asked us to develop a roadway profile that could get down to Littler Valley Road at a reasonable grade. We provided him with that yet yesterday, I guess. It's a, from an engineering standpoint, it is 1,000 feet long, it's a winding road at an 8% grade. We've talked a lot about safety today, I mean, that's a pretty easy road to slide up. It would not, certainly would not be your choice from architectural or engineering standpoint. Is it feasible?
Yes.
Yes, it is feasible. The other aspect of this is, is it within the school's means? When the referendum budget was established, through the process of community enrollment and through the passage rate of 70%, that budget was established for the development of this school. We've been working through extraordinarily inflationary times, which put tremendous amount of pressure on the architects, engineers, and the district in order to come up with solutions that had still fit within the referendum budget, and frankly, this driveway does not. Going down the Littler Valley Road is beyond the district's ability from a cost standpoint, and they would not be able to build it. So, while that driveway may appear attractive to some people, from the district's standpoint, it's just not, it's not possible. Doesn't, doesn't fit within the dollars that we have left. It is a threefold increase over the driveway to 8th and 11th Street. As I mentioned, it's an 8% grade all the way down, and winding, and they would be responsible for maintaining them, way, clopping it, and keeping it in a safe, you know, safe, open manner during the winter, where it would be safer, buses, people's cars, things like that. And additionally, you know, as we, as we've heard, Littler Valley Road is, is a very narrow country road, it has a lot of grade changes up and down, and a lot of curves in left and right. The speed limit is 45 miles an hour. I drove down there right before this meeting. I mean, I just, I cannot imagine a bus or a commercial truck having to access the school, having to navigate that road. I don't think that extending it just to the driveway would handle the problem, I mean, it'd go beyond that, and that's also not something that the school can bear as an expense. So, for those reasons, it's from the district's standpoint, I don't want to speak without the thought that there was here, but financially, it's a non-starter. We don't feel that it is a safe place to connect, we don't feel that Littler Valley Road is a safe place to connect, and it also impacts the school log on the surrounding residential neighborhood. We've heard a lot about people wanting to be able to walk to school, creating an access point to the school that is 80 feet below the building. Littler Valley Road is not a way that will increase people's ability to walk their children to school. Having it connected to the surrounding community allows that to happen. With regards to sidewalks to school, support sidewalks on the site, there's no sidewalks leading to the school. And when the, when sidewalks come to the school, the school is fully permitted putting sidewalks in at that time. But lacking sidewalks, it doesn't make sense to add into walking down the road to get to the site. When sidewalks come to the, to the site, the school is 100% permitted to put sidewalks into the site. And if there's any other questions, I mean, if that is open.
So, they're trying to put sidewalks in until the village puts sidewalks up. So, they're trying to do sidewalks on this current area.
Currently, during the first days of, there were not the sidewalks. That's not part of this private exception.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? You said the sentence way was acceptable, as it exists right now. Would you say that it is ideal or acceptable?
I would say it is acceptable.
Okay. When we're dealing with children, I don't think acceptable or ideal are synonyms at all.
Well, I will say, I guess I don't want to, it, we looked at it with some of the DOT criteria in the past.
Interesting. You're not, you know, part of the site, I'm just giving you, there's a few words that in this discussion that concern me. One is ideal versus acceptable. One is variance. A variance really for a school district to put in an elementary school, a variance? We shouldn't have a variance, that's, we don't have a policy for that, we're not supposed to have that at an intersection. Why? Perhaps safety? And now we're going to grant a variance? I, I don't know how that works. The other question I have for you, is the elevation going up, going up this, up to the school off of Littler, the same elevation as 10th?
The, what Jesse had said to us is that the entrance off of Littler is at 70%, which is actually less than even some of the private road, and similar to what's on 8th. So, I really don't see a concern with the 8% rate of the drive.
That was something that was told us, that it's almost, elevation is the elevation, you have to look at some of its other, you know, some of the 10th and 11th, those elevations are just, just as concerning.
Yeah, I, we really don't have any concern about that 70% on Littler, supposedly what they sent for the driveway going down Littler.
And then, the other issue I have, or the other question I have, is the topic of money keeps coming up. I don't think that for safety purposes, if I look at over 50 entrances to elementary schools, which are wide, one-way sidewalks, I don't think that that one, the entrance way is safe, nor do I think it's fair to the citizens who are paying for the school district. And I have nothing against the school whatsoever, I'm just looking at the safety of the children, and I'm looking at the tax burden of the citizens, they are going to pay for this. Their lives are going to be, their lives are going to be disrupted because of buses and traffic going in there. It's not fair to those communities to just plow through there, add a variance, it's not, I, it's like saying, you know, this is the seatbelt that will make you safe, but here's a variance, here's another one, it's just as safe, it's not with children, I just, I just can't see that. So, I would not be voting for this variance, one, safety, two, infrastructure, creating more tax burden for the citizens, and three, it is the citizens of this community who are paying for the school district, they should get it right. We built those other schools, we didn't get it right, this entrance way we need to get right, and we also need, if we're going to build down... This entrance way we need to get right, and we also need, if we're going to build down Leclerc and it's going to add more to the village, the road should be obviously fixed. But I am not going to sit here and constantly add $1.3 million road projects because we have a minimum running through there. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comment or any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have some questions here for Joe in regards to some of these streets here that we have. First of all, we have, have that there? Just kind of a lot of our problem there. I think we have some issues with singles up there over the last couple of years.
Within the last two years, we did have a sewer project separated, ready for a tunnel, a tunnel to the town. When people go to walk in that direction, they always have a hole going up there. The pipes are separated. The pipe's been in since 1973. I would think somewhere near that's where the hole, I, right there. But yes, that did happen a few years ago. I don't know if I've seen it, and more than likely those pipes separated.
So is this something that we had as additional possible issues going on from that area?
It's, it's all over the place.
Where I say I can call that apart?
Yeah.
It's awesome. The pipe is from 1973 for. So I don't like that. And then what's our current board where there's scheduled, if you can recall it, 38th Street? We don't even have that on the list. As now you're not starting the next project, after that, you're going to refer, we need to look at Earl Road. There's a good one, that's going to be all the way. And then your update, if we have to go bottom first, we get our elevation set for our sand area and our shore, then we can go up. We can go around, we can go up, and we're already down. So that's pretty much over. That's all we have.
One thing I wanted to add, talking about Eighth Street, I remember that proud manager and electric engineer on that street, that we had one with no buses on Eighth Street, but we'll have to modify the latest TIAU because it still shows buses on Eighth Street.
Okay, so all the buses are going to be going up there, that Avenue coming down from that, or the west side?
It's more the issue with Eighth Street north, but the secondary work is very narrow. In the PIA, they showed options of either coming up Eighth Street from the existing schools, or coming south from 39 down Eighth Street. In the evaluation, we indicated that using Eighth Street north of the school, north, this potential connection would not be acceptable, and they choose there's, they're coming in from 39 to the school.
The school has agreed to that stipulation. There's no, it's just a matter of updating.
I have an argument to add in regards to this, you know, eventually that, oh, like that Eighth Street is going to be on the schedule, prepared and kept, and I don't even work out why now putting a sidewalk in is all that nature here too. Is that a way, going to be acceptable for buses at that point? I'm so down by 10 years or whatever. Is that?
I assume if we ever reconstructed Eighth Street, we would build it to such a degree that it would be able to support those types of buses.
Currently, we don't have any, we're dealing with things that are lower.
Correct. Conditions can change. We've rearranged road projects before based on basic deterioration of the things. It's not, currently, the street extension is not on our five or 10-year plan based on other roads that are in worse condition.
I guess, the other, one other question that I can add, we did brought up that a pre-community area is one that has some sort of discussion of the school. The school is so that they have had this discussion of that, is that correct?
Here's a, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, pre-referendum, we had multiple community meetings, we sent out information, we asked for community input. Actually, at that point, there was, at one point, an access point on Leclerc, and our feedback varies strongly from the community at that point. And again, it was above the size of this, or probably even a bit less, was they did not, because of the poor condition of Leclerc Valley, and the four sidelines, we thought there was significant safety issues as well as grade issues. And so at that point, we shifted and moved everything up the hill to avoid Leclerc Valley because of community feedback. So, I mean, we did take the back, that was pre-referendum. Then when we got to the referendum, we put out, in fact, I have a flyer with me, that that means that site, except for doing the building down the hill, the access points, these basic plan is all the same as was put out to referendum between April 21.
But that access point, that that intersection for the record, appears to be a walkway, not a street. The size of it appears to be a walkway, not a, the whole thing is a street. I can, I'm happy to pass it around. But it was the whole thing is a street. There's two access points that show a street. But in any case, so we have had that sort of community input, when people talk about that there was community input. We did have meetings, we did get information out of the community, and we did take the back.
I guess I would ask one more. Do you have any concerns over Eighth Avenue or Eleventh, access or the ending? Or on safer, on safer than Leclerc Valley? You want to ask artists or people? Because, I mean.
No question. So, with that said, if we don't Leclerc Valley, we'll be reviewed by the same standards that we've hoped that for Eighth and Eleventh. So from a, once it's in a improved state, the intersection itself would be of the same standard. If that's, if that's what I can confirm to that.
Yeah, we have been doing all the details with Quaker and Community School, and that's what they want to follow that. So they have hired that. If they were, then that's what we would face a scene for. Were you doing a motion? What people, what the big motion would be now, and what's happening in court?
Any motion in the night?
Yeah.
Exceptional.
Exceptional.
So then, then we stay in.
No. The exception would be denied. The driveway would be named, would be denied. Board, now we are, just for desire, we are down a member, or prefer to have this question answered by the full board, postpone to a date certain. We have a board with six feet, a sixth member of the board right now, one is out sick. If the board prefers to have this question answered by the full board, postpone to a date certain, AKA the next meeting. That would require, and then currently, the board.
You have a motion for second?
I think we have a motion for second. Can you vote for the board? Are you ready for your questions?
So to summarize what we're voting for, and for.
Okay, Gary, you want to explain that?
I was just, I was just saying, there's a motion in the second, so there's a motion to deny on the table. If a board, if someone wanted to delay, or wanted to delay action until the full member, the full board is available, a motion to postpone to a date certain is superior to the main motion, it's bound to be considered first if one are committed. There's a hierarchy of motions in our system. A motion to postpone, trust, a made by a, a simple motion.
Okay. We'll hold. Is there a second motion?
Wait, check with the question.
I have a motion by Henry to deny an exception request, a second by Peggy.
So clarification, I guess, what we're going to do now?
Correct.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Andrew James.
Yes.
Maggie Cruz. Danny Newberry. Josh Phillips. Roger Farrow.
Yes. Okay. I agree, because we're in a high position, we're searching for what?
Okay, Alex, I want to say a few words, get what we need, what we're mixed. I, I question for the board, I think this, I guess, might end once, two ways. Perfect, they kind of make a statement, I have myself, kind of anything to be dealing with departmental goals, or if you guys are okay with it, maybe some, you know, hey. I have been for as soon before the village of wards that I got sworn in, it's under 2019. I've been with the wards full time for about 200. So I guess to kind of ask you, board, do you want me to kind of give, like, a statement and just for me to say the thing, or do you want your question answered?
Give me the other two statements to the board.
Okay. Yeah, that was for me. When I saw this was the discussion for appointment of the next full-time chief, I definitely caught my attention, because ever since we got hired back in 2019, it was kind of like rumblings and a part of that current chief, Bert Oldenburg, he was going to be on his way out the door in the next few years, and our current number two lieutenant servant was, he had always shown interest, but made a known that he showed interest for the next chief's position when they went back to full-time spot, had their former chief, Steve Oldenburg left. So speaking on my behalf, ever since we got hired, lieutenant servant has always made himself approachable to the officers. He's covered new relationships, some of the current full-time officers have managed to have their days off, their big days during time of panels. As far as day-to-day operations, he carries on some of the things he's in charge of, making sure all our current employees can send up on time. He's kind of our lead to guy for anyone in the village. And as village board, I'm assuming, you're all very familiar with the type of work and lieutenant servant for the remaining community members in here, I'm sure at some point, all of you have had at least probably one interaction with lieutenant servant. Moving forward to the selection of the next chief. Long work, it is a very popular profession, look back especially the last couple of years. Our name has been in the media more negative times than I can say positive. Going to a full-time chief, you never know who you're dealing with. It could be someone really good, it could be someone really bad. As village board, we know, as I just mentioned, the principle of the profession is a kind of certain preference. He's been there for over 21 years. I have run the department, he's like our fee consultants, apply. If I have a question, I hope who's this person? I just feel lieutenant servant, he knows, he knows the district, he knows standing limits, he knows the, he knows Sullivan's, he knows the way of the village, he knows everything that's supposed to be upcoming. He, he's become such a vital member of the community, a little more than quite. And I'm not sure what's up then, related to village board on behalf of his interest in this position, but I can say, the rapport that I had with him, both professionally and personally, he's earned every respect I have had. And I think he would be the best fit, the best candidate. You don't have to worry about possibly getting someone in here and then not doing much of anything and committing a lot of changes. We're a small department, right now we have three full-timers, he's one of them. We have to work well with each other, myself, Officer Promback, Lieutenant, and y'all over there. If you don't judge, very positive. So I just want a village chief and a board to be aware of. I just, again, I don't discuss the district, I'm not an administrator, I'm just speaking from an opposite point of view. That's everything in the last two and a half years. And I think that the village will benefit, seeing lieutenant servant become the next chief. And so I guess, to close off my statement by just kind of a question, but not really a question, more of a statement, that the village may look at holding up or opening up a candidacy process and convene, convene privately, or a closed session with our current chief and lieutenant servant to discuss if he does still have interest in this position. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Is it become the? The initial work requires a caution, the job position? Open that they become. Is that a? I mean, number one, I mean, maybe. Is not being especially consideration of the hiring of a specific person or reassignment of a specific person. It is, uh, unupdated, it's not new. And maybe first, uh, job structure, chief, I believe, is, that's not considered. Higher, overcame, certainly. Is that correct? Do you mind if I make a? Yes. And further, I, I really, I would like more time to do research. I think great, um, job structure. But I think some areas that I would like to educate themselves on. Maybe some question. So I don't think that I'm going to.
I think this is group one, and I'm just a combination to take this next meeting.
If you don't mind, I'll mark it down, it's postponed, postponed to the audience, first meeting.
Do you think we have somewhere in here that's contingent for, um, their salary or, or, or schedule?
That would be lacking each other.
Pardon me?
Uh, I just, this would be a, this would likely be a position of having employment contract and so scheduled work. Need more overhead in there than perhaps a good job situation.